Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for January 2016. Welcome everyone and please help me start the meeting by honoring our country and doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Terry, roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter and Roberta Eva Slajic.
The next item on the agenda is our open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum session for each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful, civil, and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting to matters that concern personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion procedures or are otherwise subject of review by the college or the board. We have no registered speakers tonight for the open forum session. Next, awards and recognitions. I have none listed?
Trustee Musil, we have none tonight.
We'll move directly then into the college lobbyist report. The legislature is in session. Mr. Carter has survived a week and a half.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. We only have eighty-two days remaining in this legislative session.
Not that you're counting.
We mark them off on the calendar in our office daily. It's kind of a little game that keeps us sane. Let me just recap what's gone on the first week and a half or so, almost two weeks now completed of the 2016 session. The governor gave his State of the State speech on Tuesday, the day after the legislature convened in Topeka, and there really wasn't a lot of substance in that speech. The good, well, not the good news, but the good stuff came the next day when the budget director delivered the 2016 governor's budget recommendations for the seventeen fiscal year. And I guess it's not a secret, and I'll just report the facts that we know, we're about twenty million dollars, not quite twenty million dollars, down in the current year. Keep in mind, that's after the budget numbers have been readjusted from the consensus revenue estimating group back in November. And we're about a hundred and seventy million or so down as we plan for the fiscal year for 2017. That means there's going to be a lot of budget shifts and transfers. We're hearing that the governor does not intend to address taxes or raise taxes in any fashion. It is also an election year. That would be a widely unpopular issue to tackle in an election year. And so that really leaves some tough decisions on the table. We're hearing different stories about what the plans look like from legislative leadership. And I believe that, it's hard to say on day eight of the legislative session, but we're hearing that their intent is to pass a budget and adjourn. I do not believe that that budget will likely be balanced, and that is a constitutional requirement that we have. That means that either through the allotment process or through some type of further cutting would be required from the administration. So we'll see what happens there. One of the things that is going to guide the budget discussion this year is an efficiency study that the legislature paid three million dollars for. Actually, the final bid came in a little bit under that. And that group produced its initial report to the legislature, which was day two and three of hearings for us last week. And that initial report or preliminary report indicates about $2.5 billion could be found in savings over a five-year period. There's a lot of interesting things in that recommendation report. About a hundred and fifty ideas were presented. Just to give you a sense, one would be, and some of these require money to recover money. One would be to hire an additional seventy employees at the Department of Revenue to recover what they think is about $300 million in either unpaid or back or audited taxes. Most of those are sales tax for businesses. You'll love this one. Delay payments by the state for up to thirty days. If the state receives an invoice, the typical payout date right now, according to the study, is about ten days. And so we're going to promote that you should wait thirty days and capture the potential savings, either through interest in your bank account or whatnot, which supposedly produces about fifteen million over five years. So you can kind of see where this is going. I think that that will be the interesting thing to watch. The budget chairs in the House and Senate are using this as a guiding document to develop budgets for fiscal year seventeen. It will be interesting to see how much of it goes on the shelf. Anytime you pay for a study, it's just that, their recommendations, and you decide what to do with them. So we'll see what happens and what really maybe, and there are some in there that can produce some savings that we would be able to fill the budget gaps with. As you know, the big issue this year is going to be the budget. One of the things that we'll be watching very closely, again, we are currently not a part of the property tax lid bill that was passed last year, but one of the first prefiled bills out of the hopper is a bill to move that implementation date up to July 1, 2016, and remove some of the exemptions. As that conversation occurs, everything's on the table. And those who are presently not a part of that legislation could become part of it. Again, we are in a dire budget situation where we're trying to find money. And while that doesn't do it at the local level, it's one thing that legislators can point to, that they can say that they saved folks taxes, or at least that would be the message that they would take out of that. And I've listed that bill that we'll be tracking in my report. The other bill, a couple of bills that I'll just note, there is another gun bill out there that we'll be following. It's an interesting bill that I don't think really impacts anything that we would be doing differently at the college, but I do want to explain it to you so that in case you hear it come up in conversations, you're aware of what it is. As you know, when the exemption expires, unless adequate measures are made at public buildings, you can have open and/or concealed carry in those facilities. This bill would define, it would provide clarity for buildings that have multiple floors. The bill was introduced because of a situation in Salina, but remember, the application is statewide, where you might have city or county offices on floor one and two, but floor three is a courtroom or court offices. And so that is one of the areas that still continues to receive careful consideration. And this would be a situation where a local unit of government could make policy, you still would have to have the adequate security measures present, but you could dictate a floor or designate a portion of a building that would be a weapons-free zone. I only say that because we have similar situations here on campus that could become a consideration. Also, when you open up a statute on any issue that might be amendable, you want to be aware of what could possibly occur with that situation. Another bill that may or may not impact us, but we definitely want to watch it moving as it moves forward, is a bill that was recently introduced that would exempt the capital outlay portion of school district budgets if a TIF project were to be implemented. And we've seen that conversation start in certain parts of the area here in Johnson County. And that's something that we certainly want to be aware of as we continue to manage budgets here on campus. The final bill that I would talk about is House Bill 2483. And this bill is specific to the campus. You'll recall that last year I talked a lot about Senate Bill 93, which was the inclusion bill to make Johnson County Community College a part of the GED Accelerator Program, which was passed in 2014. Recall that we were expressly excluded from that because there was another bill that spoke specifically to a pilot program at JCCC. That bill did not pass or make its way through the process. And so an effort was afoot last year to include our college with the other eighteen, so that all nineteen community colleges would be eligible to participate in the GED Accelerator Program. That bill passed the Senate forty to zero last year, passed out of House Education and died on House General Orders of a deadline. It did not meet a deadline for passing the House. So the exact same bill was introduced. We've already had a hearing on it. It was a fast process. The hearing was yesterday afternoon in House Education Budget. That committee will work the bill on Monday, and it's anticipated that it will move to House General Orders and hopefully be passed. And then we'll quickly move that through the process in the Senate. The Senate already voted on it forty to zero. It's a non-controversial bill, but it does directly impact our campus. I've also listed a host of deadlines in the report this time. I might not include that in every report, but just wanted you to be aware of what the process is that we work through in Topeka. And I'm not sure that I've included that in the past. So I think I would stop there, Mr. Chairman, and see if there's any questions that I may or may not be able to answer.
Trustee Lindstrom and Trustee Cross.
Mr. Carter, was there any report in the efficiency study that impacted the community colleges?
I would need to go back and look through that. We briefly perused the executive summary, and the longer report speaks some to higher education, but I don't recall if there were any specific recommendations to community colleges. I'm trying to think more specifically if there were items in the career and tech ed area. The final report from the consultant is due to the legislature on February 12th. And so while I don't anticipate a lot of movement, there still could be some changes in the final product of the report. But I will go back and look specifically to see if I can identify any items in that report that would impact one way or the other, or possibly the community college system.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, with a couple of questions with respect to the efficiency study and then the deadlines. I'll probably start with the deadlines and ask, what do those deadlines even mean? When I interned at the legislature, people regularly adhered to those as if they were chiseled in granite. My concern is that bills particularly dealing with the budget or affecting us will come out of nowhere in the final days of the session. So what weight do these rules even have if the members of the legislature won't even abide by them?
Well, as you might anticipate, the legislature operates by not only these deadlines, but a set of rules that guide their conduct. And as long as you invoke or apply the appropriate rule, there are a number of things you can do that sometimes might get around either deadlines. We have exempt committees that can introduce bills at any time. And so other than that, I would be careful because I don't think that while conference committee reports include legislative items that maybe never had a hearing in a full committee process in one side of the House or the other, when the bills do pass, they've at least met the letter of the rule of the House or the Senate or the joint rules. I hope that answered.
I guess I would respectfully disagree as to whether their germane and bills are getting bundled up almost in congressional fashion, but that's a point of difference.
Well, we do have a legislator who is very concerned about that particular process and has introduced a bill each year for the past couple of years to limit the number of bills that can be bundled or the subjects that can be included in a conference committee report. We've also, and again, these are House rules or Senate rules that are voted on by the body. We've also had one implemented in the House that stops action or work or debate at midnight. And we've gone beyond midnight in many years in the past. So I would just say that the rules that they vote for themselves guide the conduct of the behavior in the legislature. And having said that, there's a Rules Committee, and rules are challenged and decisions are made, so.
With respect to the efficiency study, real quick, don't we pay our legislators to oversee our government, and then we hire a firm to conduct an efficiency study? Is that right?
That comment was raised during debate on that budget item. I believe the item was included in the Senate version of the budget, not in the House, and then was a product of the conference committee process as the budget negotiations were being hashed out. The other arm that we have in the legislature is the legislative post-audit arm, which frequently might undertake an audit of similar fashion, though this was fairly significant and included a large number of people.
So we just hired a firm to do what we already have an agency set up to do? Do I understand that correct?
Yeah, that was the decision of the legislative body and was passed in their budget product to establish an RFP for an efficiency study at a cost not to exceed three million. I believe the cost came in around two, it was under three million, I don't remember.
That was benevolent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm going to comment, having had a report at a school district committee meeting this week on the efficiency study. It's a policy study because one person's efficiency is another person's policy. And there are many items in there that should give us pause at the community college level. One of the recommendations was that every school district, K-12 school district employee across the state participate in the same state health insurance program. It would be cheaper arguably, depending on what your health insurance plan is, what your deductibles are, whether you have a high deductible, whether you have a health savings account. But it would be mandated by the state that every K-12 employee, teachers, janitors, superintendents would be in the same plan. That has some efficiency involved in it. It also has some big government mandates from Topeka. The other things, there were efforts to enforce joint collaborative buying efforts. So everybody would buy from the same place at the same time, and you would have deadlines at which to buy your supplies for the year. No flexibility, no uniqueness for local concerns. When you add that to moving our elections, mandating our weapons policy, imposing a tax lid on other governing bodies but not ours, saying you can't raise funds locally without an election under most circumstances to meet your needs, all of this indicates a continued erosion of local control and reliance on local government elected officials. I've not heard anything that was specifically about community colleges in the efficiency report, but it's a policy report about how you run your state and how you trust or don't trust your local governments to do their job.
Trustee. Yes, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you reminded me of an additional one, and that is that the legislation now for the state legislature to approve school bond issues before they're brought forward. And again, as another example of what you're talking about, of erosion of local control and what's best for each community.
That provision would require Shawnee Mission, if they wanted to pass a bond issue for rebuilding a school, to get approval from the state level in Topeka, either the legislature or an approving body. So you wouldn't even control your local bond issue. So, thank you, Dr. Cook.
And just if I could ask the chairman, Mr. Trustee Cook, to clarify, it really is kind of an assault on local control as opposed to an erosion. Like I think erosion is too slow and takes millions of years. Like this is just an all-out assault on local control. Go ahead.
It's a step down the yellow brick road.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Sock.
Thank you. Before Mr. Carter gets away from the podium there, I'd just like to thank him for shepherding this House Bill 2483, getting it started and not forgetting that it was even out there. That will ultimately benefit our students here, our GED students, as they pursue CTE credits. It could be a great advantage for our students, and thanks, Dick, for keeping it alive, and hopefully ultimately our students will benefit from that.
Trustee Sharp.
I have been hearing a constant refrain from our elected officials in Topeka that the only time they hear about the property tax lid is from people who have a vested interest in it. Do you hear that, that they're frustrated that they only hear from city council people and county commissioners and school board members, or?
I think it depends on how the conversation is framed. We hear lots of things in Topeka, and sorting through them and trying to figure out which ones float to the top is what we do. I do think that the conversation tends more to lean toward the erosion of local control and allowing those at the local level to make decisions that affect local folks.
I think it's really hard to explain this property tax lid concept to the average voter because it sounds like a great idea until you say, well, we can't put sewers into this subdivision. We have builders who want to build there, we have property tax that wants to come build in our city, or we have a business that wants to build there, but we can't afford to do sewers and waters and electricity to these places because that would extend beyond our 2% tax lid or whatever it is. That's where we're heading toward. And I think for the average voter to understand that, it's very complicated. But it is a huge, huge deal that we're coming up against, and the next move, as Trustee Cross alluded to, is it's a slippery slope of we're going to be included in that. There's all these little nip and tuck that we'll take against local governments, and we will be included in the next iteration. And so it is really important for the average citizen to make that call or do the email to their legislators and tell them that the property tax lid is, you know, you have the opportunity to vote for these people every four years, actually every two years, because the city elections are staggered. So you have the opportunity to vote on these taxes for people and to call your legislator and tell them, leave local government alone.
I think you're not asking a question, but an important point I think that should be made is, we hear a lot from Topeka that we don't like the federal government telling us what to do.
Right.
But that gets handed down to the local units of government, and I think that's an important piece that shouldn't be missed out on.
If DC put a tax lid on Topeka, can you imagine what would happen with the tax bill that happened last year, you know, the largest tax increase in Kansas. History of DC said, no, you can't do that. So call your legislators.
We live in interesting times.
We do indeed.
And we thank you for being up there and watching out and providing good information to our legislators. I know when we met with them for their breakfast and our lunch, they appreciate the fact that you're there to let them know what is in the interest of Johnson County Community College.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
All right, ready for committee reports. The first item on the agenda is collegial steering. We did not meet in January. It was during the winter session before classes were in, well, I guess there were some classes in session because of our new winter session, but the general classes were not in session, so we did not meet in January. I have no report for that. The next item is human resources. Dr. Drummond, or is that you, Trustee Ingram?
Yes, well, it is, but we did not meet as well. So, thank you.
All right. Learning quality. Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The learning quality committee meeting occurred in this room on January 4, 2016. Trustee Ingram and I were there along with members of our administration and staff. Learning quality committee, excuse me, did not meet on January 4. Sorry. I was not there.
Nor was I.
We wanted to meet. To the committee electronically for consideration and approval. I really do have a seven-week-old. Anybody watching in the future?
Yes.
I got to get one of those.
And a pineapple, right?
Two items were sent to the committee electronically for consideration and approval so that they could be submitted to this evening's board packet. The two items moved forward included curriculum recommendations from the Education Affairs Committee. The curriculum recommendations include two new courses, numerous course edits and course deactivations, one new program, four program edits and four program deactivations. The curriculum changes submitted for board approval are included in the consent agenda. Three new credit affiliation agreements for the Emergency Medical Science Program are also considered. The agreements have been approved by legal, and details can be found in the consent agenda. Finally, two cooperative agreements supporting the College Now program were considered. Those agreements were moved forward at the January 6 Management Committee meeting, which we did have, right? And included in the consent agenda. The next regular learning quality committee meeting will be held on Monday, February 1, 2016. And Mr. President, I apologize for misspeaking, but that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, you guys can get something done even without meeting. That's what's impressive. We need more of that around here.
And thank you to Mr. Anderson for preparing your report.
Management Committee, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Being I was more ill than normal on that day, I did not attend the meeting, and I'll refer that report to Trustee Lindstrom. The committee did meet on Wednesday, January 6.
As Dr. Cook mentioned, we met on Wednesday, the 6th of January, here in the boardroom. The information related to the management meeting is found on pages two through 10 in the board packet. We have one recommendation to present this evening, and that regards transfer of Johnson County Community College fund, transfer to the Johnson County Community College Foundation. This recommendation is for a transfer of funds. Revenues generated through the recycling effort of the Johnson County Community College Office of Sustainability are considered public funds of the college and are recorded in the college's books in the Sustainability Initiatives Fund. Sustainability Committee has requested 5,000 of the recycling proceeds be transferred to the Johnson County Foundation for scholarships, and therefore it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of $5,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the JCCC Foundation for student scholarships, and I will make that motion.
Second.
We moved and seconded a transfer of $5,000 to the Foundation for Scholarships from the Sustainability Fund. Are there any questions? Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, on the other reports and other committee work, information was presented about several agreements, which can be found in the consent agenda on pages 31 and 32 of the board packet. These agreements are for concurrent enrollment partnerships with a number of area high schools, and also there was a facility use agreement with the DeSoto School District. The management committee received several other reports from staff. These include a report from Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, on the college's insurance program. Susan Ryder, Director of Accounting Services and Grants, described our financial ratio analysis. And Philip Mean, the college's IT security officer, gave a report on IT security. Rachel Lerts presented semi-annual review of management budget reallocations and a comparison of the original and amended general PTE fund budgets. Mitch Borchers presented a sole source report as well as a summary of bids between $25,000 and $100,000. This summary can be found on page four of the board packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and his report is on page seven of the board packet. And Tom Pagano provided a quarterly update on projects in Information Services, and this report begins on page eight of the packet. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Questions for Trustee Lindstrom?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Just to challenge the board to achieve the speed and efficiency that Trustee Lindstrom accomplished in that meeting, I think that Trustee Cook would be jealous of how fast we do that meeting. So I challenge the board to rival Trustee Lindstrom's speed and efficiency.
Having worked on a board with Dr. Cook for five years now, it may be that his absence allowed the meeting to move along faster, but it would be wrong to say that out loud, right?
Mr. Chairman, my feet a lot bigger than Dr. Cook's, but I still cannot feel his shoes.
Second.
All right, moving right along. President's recommendation for action, and we have the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Lindstrom? Our Treasurer Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, the board packet contains the Treasurer's Report for the month ending November 30, 2015. Some items of note include page one of the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. As of November 30, 42% of the college's fiscal year had expired. During November, the college made the following revenue payments, bond payments, which are reflected in the plant which are reflected in the plant fund section of the Treasurer's Report. Payment number nine of 33 on Series 2011 Revenue Bonds was $231,938. Payment number six of 30 on Series 2012 Revenue Bonds was $502,250 for a total of $734,188. Also, during November, the college made the following payments on the Board of Regents' Post-Secondary Education Institution Infrastructure Finance Loan Program. Do I need to repeat that one? Which is split between the general auxiliary and the capital outlay funds. It was an annual payment number seven of eight, and that payment was $664,981. The college unencumbered balance for November, as of November 30th, 2015 in all funds was $59.3 million, which is approximately 9.7 million higher than the same time last year, which is 20 months in a row that we've had a higher-than-the-p previous-year unencumbered cash balance. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budget limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October, November 30th, 2015, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the Treasurer's Report. Are there any questions? Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Dr. Sopczik, President's Report.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. First of all, congratulations to everyone on campus for a very successful start of the semester. Specifically, I'd like to highlight Karen Martley and her team for executing an absolutely terrific professional development program. So Karen, thank you very much. You have in front of you your monthly report to the board, 28 pages of incredible insights and accomplishments for our faculty and staff here at the college as they work towards student success. It's fantastic reading, and I hope you enjoy it. We haven't had a lightning round in some time. And a part of that was because the last meeting we had, I was so excited about the student presenters that I absolutely forgot to call on the lightning round presenters. So we're going to pick it back up again. And Dr. Korb.
Okay, I am going to talk a little bit about enrollment. On Monday, which was the day before classes began, we were down about 3% in headcount. But that doesn't tell the whole story, and I want to talk a little bit about some of our enrollment strategies that we have put into place that we think will help offset that. First of all, that doesn't include the College Now students. So the high school students, it doesn't include those numbers in their enrolling, and that will continue for a period of time. But one of the enrollment strategies that we put in place was to look at and develop more short-term classes. So classes that students would be able to enroll in at multiple points during the semester. And so we have a lot of those that we have put in place, and we've increased those. But those are, some of those classes, because they're online, or they're hybrid, or they're short-term, so they're four weeks or eight weeks, we can start them as we need them. And so we have that strategy in place. We've increased some of those, so we'll see. But we're encouraged, actually, and believe that we'll see those enrollment numbers continue to creep up as a result of some of that as we go through the semester.
That's great. Thank you, Judy. Dr. Larson.
Thank you. As the board is aware, we're embarking on a facilities master plan. The selected firm, the Smith Group, spent three days here last week for their first on-campus visit, and it was very productive. They toured just about every building here, and they held 16 working sessions with various groups, including two open forums with faculty and staff. And thanks to many people here who participated in those. At this point, these are very big-picture discussions. How should our facilities be configured to serve our students 10 and 20 years in the future? What does the classroom of the future look like? We know that there's much more emphasis on collaborative learning spaces in classrooms than when many of our buildings were designed and built 40 years ago. We also talked a lot about student functions and how they're aligned and where they're located. Does our campus make sense for incoming students? Where is this campus's front door? That came up several times. The Smith Group has also gathered a lot of data on how we are using our facilities and on our inventory of facilities, and they'll be able to compare us to other comprehensive community colleges, and we'll be sharing that analysis with us. A board workshop is scheduled for Saturday, February 13th, on this subject. And they and we are looking forward to hearing from the board on your vision for the future for our facilities. So again, it's just starting, a very exciting project, and we look forward to this continued discussion.
Thank you, Barbara. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Yeah, we reported just before, well, at the end of last semester, that we would be introducing a winter session. That winter session has been completed. We had 140 students who enrolled almost the moment that the classes were posted. We met, and I want to thank Ed Lovett and Vince Miller. We met with the faculty well before that session started and set our standards and expectations and communicated very clearly with the students what they were embarking on. This would be very rapid, it would move quickly, and the classes were actually ready to go before the, actually before the first day, so they were all online. Interestingly, of the 140, there were some students who decided not to pursue that course the very first week. But we ended up with 105 students who completed with over a, almost 90% success, or some people that, as often in academia, didn't quite make the grade. But the vast majority did, over 90%. And the comments, we've done a survey, follow-up survey with the students that were in those six sections, I'm sorry, six sections of classes. They were all general ed courses that will transfer and move students toward degrees. The comments were really, just really quite wonderful, actually. Please continue the winter session and consider expanding the program throughout the year. Keep improving the overall organization of the program so every member of the staff, like bookstore, financial aid, are well-informed about the program. One of the challenges with embarking on this is it changes some of our service strategies. We had those things work through pretty well. We can improve on that, but it's something that we'll take going forward. Professor Hadley, excellent professor, excellent way to teach in four weeks. Dr. Mack is amazing. Please pass that along to him. He taught the history class. Let him know the outline of the class, the discussions, the readings, the textbooks, the quizzes. Everything was great. I learned so much. His email updates kept me on task, and his readings were interesting. I'm really glad you had the opportunity. This is another comment. And even though I will not be able to take another winter session, I will definitely recommend it to others. Professor Judith Polo in Biology was outstanding. We were fortunate to have access to her almost all of the time, day and evening. She responded to emails and discussion questions in a timely manner. A great experience. The final one I'll read, it was intense. And that was a comment that came through several times. This was, it moved quickly. It was intense. I feel, though, that I learned and retained more from this immersion experience than I even, than I ever thought I would in the 16-week course. I love not having to split my time and my brain between different subjects. I could not have done this if I had not had two weeks off to work, but I would love to quit work and take four courses a semester anyway. And it goes on. But the students now know how to run the course very efficiently and quickly, but the responses were almost overwhelmingly positive, and we will continue to expand this and explore it. And it dovetails with what Judy was saying. These kind of sessions will give us a chance to enroll students who don't normally show up in that initial student count. So we were really pleased with the response. It worked very well.
Andy, how many courses did we run?
We ran six.
And next year, what do you think for next year? Since you're not going to be here, you can say pretty much.
We'll do 75 or 100 of these. The challenge, and again, in the comments that came to the faculty, the critical thing is that we not just put courses out there. We want the, these are courses that are experienced faculty that know how to teach online, deliver quality product. I would hope that we could double this, at least, you know, maybe. I mean, it would be, we have to have the courses. We want them to be courses that matter. We have to have faculty that are prepared to do it, but it will certainly increase.
Yeah, it's a real tribute to the faculty and staff, considering this was over break and all. To make these happen is about as flawlessly as one could have hoped. So thank you very much. It's a big deal for us.
And Ed and Vince, I want to repeat, they were online throughout. When the college was closed, we had people monitoring the web so that if students had a question, we would be able to resolve it.
That's terrific. Thanks, Andy. I was just kidding, Karen, I know. I want to build a little bit on Mr. Carter's report, having spent the last two days in Topeka. And I'll share with you my experience and some of the issues that emerged over that time. As we all know, the landscape of higher education in Kansas, like it is all over the country, is changing. I mean, there's a variety of reasons behind it. You've got demographic shifts, you've got technology, increased competition. Even the numbers of available students throughout the state could be a factor. So what has resulted, and Dr. Korb alluded to this earlier, are challenges and the success we've had with regards to addressing enrollment. But imagine an entire state with six universities, 19 community colleges, and six technical colleges, all vying to grow their enrollments. Imagine what happens, especially in a state like ours that is reportedly losing population every year. So this report is going to focus on the effort of one regional university and their strategy to address that issue. Wichita State University, WSU, which is in south-central Kansas, has kind of embarked on a new path, something unique for universities. They are aggressively marketing concurrent classes to high schools in about an 11-county area. That's like College Now that we offer. And this is kind of an expansion, kind of mission creep for a university to get into this game. Historically, that has always been the purview of community colleges. For us, College Now, and I don't know about you, but wherever I go, one of the compliments that I get all the time is about our College Now program and how that's being used by our, by the students and their families in our county. What makes it even more interesting about Wichita State is that when we offer College Now, we're offering that at our regular hourly rate, what, $94 a credit hour? What they've done is that they're offering it for about $100 a course. That's $33 a credit hour, which is a considerable discount from what they would normally charge.
Which would be $300 a credit hour?
Probably in that neighborhood. And I should have been ready for that. I knew you were going to ask, but I, but probably in that neighborhood. Oh, here's the other thing. And if you're in one of those 11 counties, one of those high schools, and if you're on free or reduced lunch, you get to go for free. You don't even have to pay to get college credit. That's a pretty good deal, and ultimately, that's going to help grow WSU's numbers. So this is why this is kind of unprecedented. One, they're doing concurrent classes in high schools, never been a part of their mission, but it's always been a part of the community college mission. And this level of discounting for public education is unheard of. So needless to say, those community colleges in south-central Kansas, especially Butler, they're pretty wound up about it. It would be as if a university came into our county and started giving away concurrent classes. That would make inroads in our enrollment here. So last evening, all community colleges, all the presidents from the community colleges, got together and we tried to construct a strategy to confront this situation in south-central Kansas. So I'm going to give you some scenarios and think about these ramifications. As universities are getting into the concurrent market, apparently with no restrictions, they don't have to abide by service areas, and obviously, they have no concern for cost, does this lead to the abolition of service areas across the state? In other words, would now, if you start lifting service areas, that would invite every community college to come to Johnson County? Right now, if an institution wants to do something in our county, they have to ask us. University of Kansas. Likewise, if we want to go to Douglas, we would have to ask University of Kansas, kind of like getting permission. That would go away. So now you've got kind of a Kansas-Oklahoma land rush into Johnson County, because we're the prime real estate for the state. Could this lead, could this lead to chaos as everyone could go just about everywhere, every day? We'd all be out there trying to grow it. Headcount, it would lead to, could this lead to a highly competitive environment across the state that could bloat marketing and recruiting budgets? Now, schools have to spend even more money on trying to recruit and marketing. And then could this lead to a price war? I mean, I could see a sign out front where we could have classes, kind of like a gas station, where we could have classes for $25 a head. And then we would compete perhaps with another college that's going to be doing the same thing at even a lower rate. So these are all some of the scenarios that perhaps could be on the horizon as WSU kind of leads the way. Another thing that we learned, and there's so, I don't, working in Topeka, there's so much speculation and rumor and all this intrigue. It's kind of fascinating. But this is something else that's being talked about. WATC, Wichita Area Technical College, will merge with WSU. It's a big deal when you look at all of these colleges and schools across the state. WATC receives no, they have no local tax base, so they're state-funded, as is WSU. So it's easy to put those two together, kind of like what Washburn has done with their CTE initiatives at Washburn Technical.
CTE stands for?
Career and Technical Education. But a lot of the community colleges are concerned that this is the first step toward regionalization, that now smaller community colleges are going to be consumed by regional universities and perhaps even ultimately, universities. Which then leads to the next question. Could Johnson County Community College someday be consumed by a university? As long as we get tickets to Allen Fieldhouse, I think maybe we could go for that. But the, but these are all, sorry, or Ahearn, is it Ahearn College? Yes.
Brandlidge College.
Sorry. Kansas State University, fine program. But these are issues that are being addressed by, or generate a lot of concern among community colleges. And one of the approaches is how can we deal with this? Not just with the KBOR, but also, you know, in the legislature. And that was what we experienced with Mr. Carter and I, working the halls in the Capitol yesterday as well as today. That concludes my report. A lot of food for thought, but it underscores the importance of our involvement in Topeka as these things kind of, they kind of get, they just get traction all to themselves. It can easily get out of, out of control before you know it. So thank you for the report.
Questions, President? Very interesting, along with Dick's report. Those would be dramatic watershed changes in how we have handled higher education in Kansas. And that doesn't mean they shouldn't consider them, but a reasoned, rational deliberation on them might be useful. Okay. Thank you, Joe. I have no old business and no new business. Report from Board Liaisons, Faculty Association, Ron. Welcome back to another semester. Ron Paulsek, President of the Faculty Association. It shouldn't be more formal.
Is Tom here, Clayton?
No, he's not.
I just slipped on the ice yesterday. I need to talk to him.
That's your lead-in?
Is anybody there?
Put your card back in your pocket, Trustee Cross.
About four or five students get concerned about me.
On the wrong side.
Trustee Musil, thank you. Trustee Sharp, Trustee Lindstrom. Trustee Cook. Trustee Cross and Trustee Ingram. Welcome back. Happy New Years to you. It's good to see you. And to the board, Joe and his administrative team. Kidding, all kidding aside, we started off the school year of the bang, started on Tuesday after Martin Luther King's birthday. And unfortunately, it came to a quick end at 12:00. And rightly should. The ice was very, very bad. In all seriousness, it was really extremely bad on campus. And I'm glad it was canceled for the rest of the day for safety purposes. The first week of classes have been started, as I said. We're moving along quickly. It's been a short week, but the faculty are very involved already. We hit the ground running. We have the Higher Learning Commission visit coming in spring 2018. And as our assessment program says, that's like just around the corner. We have system portfolios preparation that's going on with a lot of faculty involvement. We have strategic. We have strategic planning groups meeting on campus daily, basically. Student assessment, college-wide, all the way down to individual departments. Back to the Smith Group. That was a very good presentation. From the faculty's point of view, they were very open, they had really great data, they were open for information, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the final report on that. Across the campus, divisions, departments, we're doing things like educational affairs, for lack of a better name, student engagement. We're doing this college-wide, we're doing it by the divisions, we're doing it by the departments, even down to the classrooms. Faculty engagement, we're working on that as well, besides just the program that we had the week before. Curriculum, we're always looking at curriculum, how can we improve it? Winter session is a point. D-LAC, which is distance, this is for Trustee Musil, Distance Learning Advisory Council. We have, we kidnally talk about it, we have D-LAC, we use capital letters, but in our department, we use the little case, so we call it Little D-LAC. And so, it's funny, so we can separate the two, and it's the up and coming. I was fortunate enough to get to go to a conference over the break. It was over at the Kaufman Conference Center, just north of UMKC. We had a distance learning specialist come in, was talking about something that I'm getting very interested. It's called Big Data, and this person was from the University of Michigan, and that's why I attended. But there was a side trip to this, and that is that we, I learned a lot about distance learning, because a lot of the small group sessions were in there. I would like to encourage us to continue to go to these things. It was free, and they even provided me a lunch, which was quite good. The other things we're doing, we have course coordinators, and this is where we have faculty members full-time that work with other full-time faculty, as well as part-time, or what we call adjuncts at the college, to encourage them to do the best job they can, to provide them with the resources they need and guidance, and even to take some suggestions, and to continually make our school a much better place. So again, I would like to thank you and welcome you all back for a new year, and if there's any questions for me, if not, we can set a record for the shortest meeting tonight.
Questions? Trustee Cross?
Professor, thank you for your report, and your comment on the ice was bad the other day, is that right?
Yes.
Who's responsibility is it to clean up the ice?
Well, honestly, the sidewalks were well-prepared. What happened to me was I stepped out a side door, and it was onto the commons area. They did clean the sidewalks, the steps were well-cleared, and I was just mildly hurt. It was more embarrassment when I fell down, and all these students said, "Are you okay?"
I raised the issue because my wife the other day asked me yesterday morning, she says, "Why is it such a panic that we're having like an inch of snow?" And I looked at her and I said, "Well, honest to goodness," I said, "when you want less government, you get less stuff." So when there's a cut, say at the state level, in resources, you've been at several places, right?
Yes.
We have pretty good resources here.
Yes, we do.
To fix and take care of sidewalks and other hazards like that, right? But I said to her, I said, "Look, when the state cuts their budget, then the municipalities are on the hook for all these resources." So I guess I'm just glad to hear that we have the resources here to take care of these issues, because I think some of our neighbors in this state perhaps do not. So, thank you for that comment.
Oh, you're welcome.
I want to thank the faculty for participation in the facility study, because that is facility's master plan, because that ultimately will step on some turf and some toes, perhaps, and when we figure out how, after a campus that has grown for forty-five years, how do we organize it in a different fashion, perhaps, not just in individual classrooms, but by departments and front doors and that type of thing? So, obviously, you are on the front lines of teaching and learning, and so we appreciate the fact that your colleagues and the faculty and the ones that are here tonight are helping, participating in that, just like you did in the strategic plan. I think it's critical that we have your input.
Well, I'd like to thank the leadership of the college, starting with the board, on down to Joe and further down. Without them, we wouldn't be as involved, and it's very thoughtful of them to include us, and it's been very, very helpful. And I think we've been really getting some good insight from everybody, and eye-opening too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good semester. Next is the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, the research, the Education Research Triangle Authority met on February, January, I'm sorry, Friday, January fifteenth. This meeting was held at 7:30 a.m. at the KU Med Center, Clinical Research Center. There was a quorum present, and Chairman Ilert presided over the meeting. We received a report there from Dr. Roy Jensen, who provided statistics on cancer in the U.S., the benefits of having such a facility here in the Midwest, as well as an update on the work being done at the Clinical Research Center. We renewed a one-year agreement with the accounting firm, Allen Gibson Holick, to provide audit services for the organization. We received university reports from K-State, Olathe, Ralph Richardson gave that report, KU Edwards Center, David Cook gave that report, and the KU Medical Center, a report was given by Jeff Rine, who reported that the KU Medical Center now has been in existence for four years. The receipts for the last month were, the J-Cert is funded by sales tax, and receipts for December were up in Johnson County, which is good news, almost ten percent, and that's a sales tax, a percentage of a sales tax. And then for 2015, sales tax in Johnson County for this purposes, for these purposes, were up almost three and a half percent for the entire year. There will be another meeting of the Johnson County Research Triangle Association, that will be held tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. at the KU Edwards Campus, the best building, room 315, and that is to review some of the RFPs for Public Relations Firm. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay. I think you said that KU Med Center had been in existence four years, you meant the Clinical Research Center.
Clinical Research Center, yes.
Part of the National Cancer Institute's designation. I know what you meant, but it's an important function. Thank you for being the liaison to that. Any questions for David? Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In reference to Trustee Lindstrom's report, I find it interesting that the sales tax is up ten percent in light of, I believe it was the early part of this week, or the end of last week, when one of the television stations reported that Johnson County had serious leakage in sales tax to Missouri over the sales tax on food, that we're running over six percent, and they're running about one percent, and that people were going across the line. I think it was like close to a hundred million dollar leakage they reported, so I find that interesting. KACC has not met since our last meeting, we met in December, and I reported on that previously. We do have two meetings upcoming, we'll be having a reception at the National Legislative Summit in Washington, D.C. as a part of ACCT's forum, National Legislative Summit is sponsored by them, February 7th through the 11th, and Mr. Carter has helped arrange a reception on the night of February 9th for our KACC members, excuse me, to meet with our Kansas delegation. And the ACCT has come out with federal priorities that we'll be pushing as we meet with our representatives. There are, I guess, six major items here, they all deal with funding in various degrees, from the Pell Grant Program to the reauthorization of the Higher Education Act, to America's College Promise, which a number of bills have been introduced, and that continues to have support, that is the students attending community college with tuition-free, we'll see where that goes. Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act reauthorization to bring that back, and the higher education tax provision. So all of those deal with funding for students and finance for college students, and so we'll be pushing that agenda. We will have a quarterly meeting of KACC on February 11th in Topeka. That is part of the Phi Theta Kappa Luncheon, where colleges around the state will honor students. We participate in that, of course, and it's really a kind of a fun day. The PTK students have an opportunity to attend the legislature in the morning, and then we come back for a luncheon together, and they're all duly recognized. And I appreciate those of you who have signed up to go to that, you each have information regarding that in front of you, and that's always a big day. You know, I would really like your attention to anything you hear about where we are at KACC. As Dr. Sobchak indicated, we're a pretty diverse group of nineteen colleges, and with the six tech schools trying to gain a broader foothold, let's say, in gen ed courses, as well as expanding their tech ed courses, and I'd remind us that the community colleges provide about seventy-five percent of the technical education courses, and the six technical schools provide about twenty-five percent. So it's not like we're not engaged in technical education. But what I would like you to listen for, as this gap broadens of our nineteen community colleges, and Dr. Sobchak referenced the competition for headcount, for enrollment, for online courses, for crossing service line areas, we may need to have some serious discussion about what our engagement is at the state level. And I would hope to think that we're engaged so that we can bring some leadership to and help the state organization grow. We're seeing, I was on a conference call this afternoon with ACCT Board, and as I listened to the discussion at the Executive Committee, yes, we're concerned about campus security. And while the agenda deals mostly with funding, we will have a national campus security summit. It'll probably be working in conjunction with Oregon as a result of what happened at Umpqua Community College a few months back. But there's so much difference of opinion across the country, as there are in the state, about who should have guns and who shouldn't have guns. And that's just one example, but it seems like, and Dr. Sobchak, we've been going to these meetings long enough to know that it all comes down to funding. I mean, all the discussions at those nineteen colleges comes down to who can survive and who can't. But if you hear any kind of feedback about what's our involvement with KACC, what's our role, what's our role nationally? We're one of the leading colleges in the nation, nationally, and I would really value your input in that, because I think there comes a point where you want to do what's best for the big picture, but at the same time, we seem to be getting in this mold of protecting our own turf, and I've said enough, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions or comments on Dr. Cook's comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
I've commented, I know at a retreat, I think back in October, about the confounding nature of how online programs competed in Kansas. For instance, there are other smaller community colleges in Kansas that compete statewide for students. And both my parents are not from Johnson County, I have a long family history in Johnson County, but not directly from there. I was born in Wichita, I lived in northwest Kansas, and that's the only reason Jerry Moran will speak to me, Senator Moran will speak to me, our mothers are from the same home county. So I have a lot of people, friends, clients, and the rest of the state, and I do have great concerns about looking for efficiencies to the point that we're turning our area and community colleges into businesses that are competing for the lowest common denominator. I don't think that we can house, employ, or educate every possible citizen of Kansas in Johnson County. And while I like our chances in the open market, if that's what we're going to do in terms of sheer size and resources, I just think it's a poor policy to implement, and I say this because, somebody needs to say it, I mean, I think we could hold our own in the market, but I don't think that's good policy for the state, and I don't think it's fair to people in, say, Montgomery County, Kansas, or Seward County, Kansas, or blanking Thomas, Colby's and Thomas County. So, I just wanted to comment, I thank Mr. Trustee Cook for encouraging comments and input, and I thank this board for what they do, for the rest of the state.
Thank you. Trustee Ingram on the foundation?
Yes. The Foundation Executive Committee did meet on Tuesday, January 12th, in the Science Building, and we received an introduction to the EMS program from Charles Voet, the program director. Board member Stuart Stein reported that the Board Development Committee is evaluating candidates for the 2016-2017 board slate. The recommendation for members and directors will be presented at our directors' meeting in March. It was announced that the Summer Enchanted Evening Committee for 2016 will be chaired by Tom and Chaney Mitchell, and Clint Robinson will serve as sponsorship chair. Nominations for the 2016 Johnson County End of the Year have been collected, and the selection committee meets soon. There will be a reception celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Performing Arts Series on February 11th on the Yardley Hall stage. The reception begins at 5:30 p.m., and a special announcement will be made at 6:00 p.m., and we hope to see all the trustees there. The Executive Committee will meet again on March 8th, followed by the directors' meeting on March 29th. After another successful year for the Foundation, we look forward to 2016, and that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Questions? The Foundation is a critical part of this college, because it raises and expends over a million dollars a year in student scholarships that are very meaningful to lots of students, in addition to other things that it does, so appreciate your serving as liaison to the Foundation. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of routine and consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and considered separately? None, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Before we act on that, I'm going to at least bring up one potentially saddening moment from that report. A resignation on there is Dr. Judy Korbe, who has given years of dedicated great service and leadership to the college. Even better is that she's agreed to stay on through June of 2017, particularly related to our reaccreditation process, and so I wanted to make note of that. I know that everybody, almost everybody in this room knows how much Judy has given her life and her professional life and personal life to this college, and we're going to miss her, but not till June, July 1 of 2017, I guess we will miss you. I wanted to make that point, if anybody else has any comments, take them at this time before we vote on the consent agenda. I know we all feel the same way, Judy, so thank you. Dr. Sobchak.
I think for those of us who've worked at the college for some time, we all know the mark that Judy has left at this college, and what her influence has been, and all that she's done for each and every one of us. And so, the good news about this is that we still have more than a year of her being here. So we'll do all of this again at another time, but this is a good practice round for that. But anyway, thank you, Judy, and thank you for your service to the college. It's been, it's terrific.
We have time to create some charts and graphs, and we can present it in your last meeting.
That's right.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye. Oh, yeah, sorry, Trustee Cross.
Former trustee Molly Baumgartner, state senator, she's requested unpaid leave of absence. Is there extraordinary unpaid leave of absence?
It's related to her service in the Kansas Senate and rebalancing of her duties at the college with her duties at the, in the legislature, and it's been, it's agreeable to Senator Baumgartner.
I understand, and I thank you, I thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to note that it's an unpaid leave that the state senator will be observing.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. There is no executive session tonight. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.